November ninth, twenty twenty one, Board of Commissioners meeting that was stated in advertised all those. Please rise for the question.
The United States of America. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public participation on agenda will be taken at each item is discussed and also have an open public participation for non agenda items at the end of the meeting. The chair now recognizes Commissioner Kurtz, Chair of the Community Development Committee.
Thank you, Chairman. First item on my agenda is review and consider authorization to advertise public hearing. It's BET Filmont LP. It's three zero zero one Filmont, December twenty one dash oh three. And I believe the applicant is coming in on Zoom, so you can.
Yes, and they're just here if there's any questions that the board would have for them to do.
Okay, so what's in front of us? We have in our books. An attached revised ordinance for the ward. Does any. Anyone from our board have any questions regarding? Or.
Um, so are. Current. Ordinance allows eight units per acre, right?
Um, so the current.
Twelve units per acre.
Has a base density of twelve units per acre. And then there are current density bonus concepts. And then a parcel being the TOD overlay like this is located. There's one for transportation improvements, which would have a bonus of three units per acre. And then there was collaboration with Septa for a parking structure that would provide for an additional five. So there's a path for a property like this to get to twenty in the ordinance today.
So because Septa isn't doing. They said they were going to do those, those. Would be.
Irrelevant.
Irrelevant, right? So right now it's twelve units per acre and maybe.
Approximately.
What would these ordinance bring it up to?
So the ordinance has.
I was trying to figure that out.
Sure, so it would build off of the base twelve units as we started with. And then. The proposed ordinance within, there's the three units per acre for specific road improvements. That were either at the Filmont and Red Lion intersection or at the Filmont Pine Towneons intersection. Since the ordinance was adopted with those bonuses in two thousand fourteen, both of those intersections have been funded for. One with the bridge that was just done. On Red Lion Road at the Filmont intersection, the township also has a one point two million dollar. Multi-modal transportation fund grant for the next phase. And then the Filmont Pine Towneons intersection, the roundabout plan that is being funded through the tip has addressed that. And so the ordinance proposes to keep that existing language, but then also. Allows the developer to pay fee and blue. For transportation. Premise for that would be that in order to get both of those intersection plans going, the township has made a significant. Local financial effort. So this might be able to be a way for the board to recoup the funds that it had authorized to get those projects going. And then it creates two additional density bonuses that are now more relevant to this project. Then the prior iterations that the board had discussed. So the first is a net density bonus of ten additional units per acre. And this would be for, is responsive to items that the Board of Planning Commission had provided in their feedback. Including getting rid of much of the surface parking and instead putting that into the lobby structure. And then the premise for that being that it would take a reduction in the maximum allowable lot cover ratio, which today is eighty percent. And reduce that by twenty five percent so that if they're able to have it, I guess substantially more green space than the ordinance would otherwise require. The ordinance is incentivized to do that. And then it also incorporates other green features such as electric charging stations for electric cars as well as solar energy. Which conceptually would be provided on the second story of that parking garage. And then the second density bonus that is created, which is for five units per acre. Would have to do with the developer substantial over engineering, what otherwise would be the baseline for stormwater improvements. So this would be taking elements of their NPTES permit. Which part of that process is an assumption. That a portion of the property is in a better condition, even though it's not. The proposed ordinance would increase that obligation by four times. And then also other stormwater improvement elements such as stream restoration or basic construction and retrofit, green rooftops. That could either be on or off site. So provided if the ordinance, if the Board of Commissioners did proceed with the ordinance, then those would all be design elements and. Also improvements discussions that the board would be able to have in future conditional use hearings as well as the land development process. So all of that said, I guess the density that this ordinance would create would go from twelve to fifteen based off of the. The transportation component and then from fifteen to twenty five based off of the green space and certain structured parking. And then from twenty five to thirty with the additional stormwater.
So and maybe. So we've talked about two hundred and forty.
Would be, so approximately, yes, and this is based off of a sketch plan that shows a conceptual two hundred and twenty five.
And some department yes.
Yes.
The increases. Per acre. Decided. And in this, it's ten units per acre standard for creating a garage instead of. Land parking lot.
So I think it's kind of discretionary to the Board of Commissioners. So ultimately, this zoning amendment process is something that is legally able to be initiated by a property owner. So BET Investments used that authority. So they submit this application with the draft ordinance to the board and then it's up to the board to determine. Other elements of this ordinance that you'd like or other things you'd like to change, and that's been the discussion for the last few months. So really, and I guess another kind of conceptual element to it is that the township zoning ordinance. Includes community development goals, many of which are referenced in the kind of introductory text of the ordinance. That talk about the, you know, having an open mind to different design elements and concepts that may not be currently perceived in the ordinance. But something that maybe could be worked in for some sort of creative design element or something of that nature. So having reviewed the text as proposed initially by BET. And then hearing the planning commission and board's feedback from the last few meetings. Then our staff was able to help weigh in and try to really hone the ordinance towards those items that the board had divided as its feedback. So if this iteration was agreeable to the board, I would certainly suggest that those density bonuses are appropriate. But that's ultimately the discretion.
I forgive me, I know most of you know this. I just thought it was important to review it. And if. The. And I think they originally asked for over two hundred and fifty units, right? And then they went down to two twenty five. And I don't know how comfortable all of you are. Or if. You feel these. It's, you know, bonuses are appropriate. Just laying it out there, I just don't know. I still think. Pretty much, Mr. Markman, and I love the plan of the place and I love the garage, but I think. Two hundred and thirty is still too many for that. Just looking, I don't want to kick the can down the road and put this through and then have more trouble on the next stage. Does anybody else have any thoughts or comments?
I have a comment on the retail. There's three thousand square feet of retail. If for some reason they can't fill the retail. Is there any chance that they would try to convert the retail into more units? Is there a way that we can restrict that?
It may happen when maybe we're. Retail's required as part of it. So this is. A text amendment. And assuming it gets passed, then they're going to come in with the conditional use application. Plan in the hearing. And then the board will make a decision on conditional use application. A condition, a very simple condition would be that that never happened. You know, it's. It's three thousand square feet. A retail.
You can hear your shoveling hands on paper.
So it, so that would be a condition of that, and then also there's a land development plan behind the conditional use plan, actually a condition of that. But the ordinance requires the. Three thousand square feet. May have an obligation unless it gets modified somewhere down the line. The only way to change that would be for them to come in and ask for another tax amendment. And to change that in another zoning amendment, which would be. Really unlikely, given what, you know, this one, this particular text amendment is supposed to. And just, you know, this, this ordinance is really based on the. What the township's been attempting to do for quite a while is to. Redevelop, you know, the car. So you have a transit oriented development overlay zone because of the train stations. And that's the reason for the higher density. This wouldn't go anywhere else in lower world in township, but with train stations. And, you know, that's been sort of all. Molly motor development for. Fifteen years, ten fifteen years. Before my time, I know that, so. And you have someone now that's ready to do it. Fire plan for this site. That had two part of the garage, as I recall.
Correct, one for the residential building and one for Septa. Right? And the difference now is that Septa is no longer wanting to participate on this problem.
Except that was going to move the train station to the east at that. That they would build a parking garage, it would be a parking garage for this type of development, and that. Fell through. There were some commercial requirements there. So this is a probably less intense than that would have been. And. Difference between the original plan is was initiated by the landowner, not by the township, not by the planning commission, not fire. Any landowner can come in and say, I'd like to do this with my property. And that's what BET did on this particular site. They filed a formal zoning condition, which under the planning code you can do. And then it's like, and that starts the process. Because your planning goes in front of the board. You have those back and forth, push and pull, and you know, what's too much and what's not enough and. So. There's a lot of different elements in this. This latest draft than what we saw. Again, which was originally a box with very little green space.
The problem with Jillson, so if they don't fill it, it's just, they don't get.
Correct.
They're not going to do much more.
Right, yeah. Yeah, I mean, because they can't fill it, doesn't mean they get to.
Repurpose it for somebody else.
It would be an obligation of the ordinance, the conditional use decision and the planning. You know, like any other condition, it gets attached to those decisions. They'd have to come back and ask that the ordinance be modified again. You know, which I think would be. You know, not like, I think it just would need a little bit harder to fill the commercial space. And if you have living there, I think it's probably a better, you know, chance that you're going to fill. Commercial space with that, you know, development on, on the site and what's going on for the street. A lot of customers.
True.
So what's the question? That this would be also attached to the updated sketch that we did sit. Which was for one hundred and fifty one weather and one hundred and ten square meters.
Correct.
It's working in coordination with that, so this would not be two hundred and forty units.
No, it's two twenty five.
Two twenty five, just for flatlands.
Well, and two twenty five is what the developer thinks. I mean, he may need to modify that as an engineer's plan. But I would guess he's going to be able to get to one hundred and twenty five. Because, I mean, it's not like a single town of dwelling where. You know, you might see less, less homes because of the way the homes are spaced out. These are going to be, you know, in an apartment style building like we've seen. But it's two twenty five, not two forty.
So say. The public speaks. We have the hearing process. And. We go through the hearing process and. We don't want to move forward to that point, then what happens?
They, they don't move forward. I mean, the, if the ordinance gets adopted, it would be like previous ordinance. You know, for the site that had the two parking garages that they don't sit, if for whatever reason. Until someone else comes along and is willing to do it. The build in accordance with this zoning amendment.
So I have my concerns, same as everybody else on board with this right now. Two hundred and twenty five minutes, the impact on school bishop and we all have great concerns over that. With that being said, this is just taking it to the zoning hearing phase and I, excuse me, not zoning hearing phase, taking it to the hearing phase in front of Board of Commissioners. With that being said, I think we have to proceed and see what his final plan is and do that the same.
I think it's a good opportunity to have the public be heard also and, and involve. At this time, does anyone else really want to piece first?
I, I said my piece, I think the. You know, allowing up to two hundred and forty, even though his current plan says two twenty five, he's still going to buy it. Allowing up to two hundred and forty is some. I think it's scary. I mean, it's just a lot. And again, I think we're just kicking the can down the road until the next time and the next time and the next time. Oh, we can change it at this phase, we can change it at that phase. I think we should, you know, bite the bullet and change it now and see if he can come up with something. You know, if he can't, then we can try another next amendment. But I think he can find something that will make him an attorney. And a lower unit level.
But I think we have an option here for.
Well, I think we have to do.
Right, I think we have to do. At this hearing.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, I, you know, I.
Not so much it works tonight. We're going to say that's the week. I mean, I want to hear from all of you, the board first, and then I can open it to the public to see if the public. Wants to do this. Okay, anyone else? Okay, does the public have any questions? Please take the name and address.
Michael, sorry, if anybody from the public, if you don't mind coming to share from the podium, so. And then as the commissioner was saying, that you can get your needs met.
Michael Marotti, two forty Barnsley Avenue. Can someone speak to, and I apologize if I misunderstood this at the planning commission. But isn't there a part of the ordinance that talks about sixty seven percent of the project being residential and the other part being non-residential or that I'm not sure.
So, no, that is correct. And so in addition to the density bonus considerations. So what you're talking about is this gross floor area. Ratio, which would allow for a maximum of the project to be sixty seven percent residential. The way that this ordinance proposes to handle that is that it still acknowledges that. Within the TOD district, having a mix of uses as the goal. But it allows any individual development to pull in. Using from off sites, from off site to count towards it overall ratio. So rather than looking at it on a per development. Basis, it looks at it on a kind of district basis. So functionally, this ordinance would. For the TOD area that surrounds Filmont Station, there is space that would be able to pull in. Other. Non-residential uses in that area compared to the TOD overlay area around the, that there station. That one most likely would require being able to meet that ratio on the specific parcel that is being.
So if they didn't pull, how much, what are the percentages for this project?
I believe it's ninety nine.
That's a concern to me because I think the next project that could come down, then kind of stealing from that. I just think that's a lot to pull in. If they were maybe seventy, thirty, and we say, okay, steal five percent from the community, but they're ninety nine percent. Yeah, I think the reason. John, that the project has stayed empty for fifteen years is because every developer that's come in has been egregious and. Hasn't followed, I guess, our ordinance, and it's just asked for too much. Or maybe the township is asking for too much, but I just think, you know, even all of these density accommodations. I mean, for them to get to the thirty is, is a lot, I mean, you know. And I just don't know that they're going to be able to do all of those things. I just, I don't mind the project. I told this developer on the way out last time I was here that I would welcome something like that, but. Maybe within reason of a lot less units, I guess.
I mean, when we looked at the Steve Gabriel, the township planners on, on the line, when we looked at the percentages. There was some thought that they were just arbitrary to some extent, you know, and you don't have. It might make sense if you had a lot of parcels of twenty acres or thirty acres, but you've done a long card, the small parcels. For development. So you have to look at the whole, you know, broader area, not, not the eight acres for this because. The market comes into play to do the, to make, to meet those numbers sixty third. So that's why, you know, the solution really was to pull in a lot of what's pre-existed. In terms of non-residential uses to make sure that in the whole car, not on a particular small piece of ground, I, you know, eight acres is small for a development site, but. I guess big a little more, but. You know, but, so we looked at the whole thing and it made a lot more sense than. You know, trying to restrict any of the development in there. If you always redevelop these distressed properties, and that's a distressed property. You know, face it, you're going to have to get a. You know, some development opportunities, and you're going to have builders, builders going. Ready, what we've been able to do it. And. This is the first one since the last plan. That was four, five years ago.
Yeah, that, that ordinance was done in January of twenty seventeen. So and with the different proposals for this site since two thousand and twelve. There's only been two development entities associated with it. BET has owned the property outright since twenty fifteen. And then the one that was here before the planning commission and board in two thousand and twelve. Was a development entity called Greenville, and then they aligned themselves with Jefferson Apartment Group kind of in the last phase. But they, they never actually owned the property outright, whereas BET has owned it since two thousand and fifty one.
And I guess, I guess my last question for statement, I'm going to put, chief, I'm going to put you on the spot here. So my concern is they're building about three hundred and sixty car parking garage on the premises, and I'm not sure the details. But does that bring any concern to you for being so close to a train station, congregating, things happening inside of that? At night, is there going to be a security sometime, is the complex going to provide security for the residents to walk from. Parking garage to their unit, you know, it gets really dark right near the train station, that two, three story parking garage. You think that's a concern and we shouldn't be concerned with this?
It's really going to depend on the layout, how it's set up. I don't have enough information to tell you whether it was, would be an issue or not. It's a pretty small, like as described property, so, you know, I.
And it won't be dark once it's built. It won't be dark. And there's going to be connections. Building the garage of the train station, you're going to have to lay that out. I mean, it's, you know, it's going to be lit. It's not going to be the way it looks now, just, you know, a bunch of units in there, so. And there's really details that conditional use here and the land development plan are going to, we'll have to hash it out.
I just want it to kind of get, fall through the cracks and then when the project is done and then we start with a problem where, you know, they don't have enough. Pops on the street at two in the morning, you say, we can take care of that, so. That's all my questions.
Thank you so much. If anyone else has any questions, please come up to the podium and state the name and address, if you'd like.
And Bill, I know that you can talk over the.
Yes.
Bill Etrichin for Penn Keats. I have a timeframe for this project and the one at the Filmont Country Club. It's been a while since everything changed these with plans.
Sure, so maybe starting with Filmont Country Club, they received their preliminary plan approval. That was twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, a few years ago.
Right.
We now have a staff meeting scheduled with that development team now that there was a series of court proceedings that did not involve the township. That process has now been seen through. So we have a staff meeting with that developer actually for Thursday of next week. So we would expect that shortly after that, they will begin to submit their final plans. And the difference between where BET is with their project proposal and where Filmont Country Club is with theirs is that the final plan phase is really just going through a series of. Checkboxes to say that they've complied with all the conditions from the preliminary approval. So provided that they do that, that's a kind of much more straightforward process. So hypothetically, final approval could be in place by sometime in the first half of next year for Filmont Country Club. And then their development process would be dictated off of who's doing the site work, who's going to be the home builder, and those are details that we don't know yet. But that one would be available to be built shortly. For the BET proposed project, obviously, we're sitting here tonight and the discussion is ordinance. If the board does choose to proceed with having a public hearing for the ordinance next month, there would be no fewer than, I think, seven public meetings that are still necessary to get through. Consideration of the ordinance, there would be a conditional use process, there would be a preliminary plan, and then there would be a final plan. We also would have to have discussions with Pendot about the timing of the Filmont Pine Towneons intersection construction. So I think all of that, as that detail will become more specific. Then the BET team, provided that they gets to go through those phases, would be able to start developing their timing from there. But I think everything in general will be looking at a few years.
To, for any of the projects to start, even, even the intersection.
Correct.
Okay, so is, is the intersection been approved yet, the design?
So that is in a complicated bureaucratic process that is called.
Keep it there.
So Pendot receives federal highway funds, and they go through this authorization process called the Transportation Improvement Plan, TIP, or the twelve year plan, TYP, either way you call it. We are currently in the preliminary design phase of that and should hopefully have that done by the first half of twenty twenty two. At that point, the project will then be assigned to an engineer that Pendot hires. And it will be their job to finish out any outstanding elements of preliminary design. Then there's a right of way in acquisition phase, and then there's a final design phase. At the end of all of that, then they're able to put that on construction. So that could be anywhere from two years to a little.
So that would come after the Filmont project starts?
So that's the part that I guess sitting here.
The traffic's already.
The traffic is.
It's already fun, right, in that intersection, so. My concern that, I drive through there all the time. It's obviously frustrating for everyone in the township. How all that is going to come into play.
Right.
The key part.
So if, if the project had not, that if the intersection project had not received that funding. They would be each going through a highway occupancy permit process with Pendot. And that was actually originally how we were working with developers to design those intersection improvements. So there's not a traditional HRE process now associated with either of those developments because Pendot will ultimately consider. The timeframe for the roundabout leak install. So there's going to be some coordination, and I don't know specifically today how that plays out. It just gets a little bit more complicated because typically there would be direct obligations for the developer. But you wouldn't want to have them kind of double up on something that's already funded through the Pendot process. So that's why I'm giving you lots of words right now. If you don't know exactly how it will play out.
Right.
They're all kind of working forward together.
Okay. And then the land from the developer of the Filmont Country Club still is offering land for that intersection.
Correct.
Two acres or?
Almost three. Almost three acres. And so then that's what allows, I guess, the acquisition phase, we would hope would be much simpler for this version of a tip project. Than others that require a lot of acquisition to happen. Having already had that conversation with the Filmon Country Club developer years ago, will allow us to get. Hopefully, it'll all end up to get construction much sooner.
Timing was my question. Thank you.
For town branches, can you tell them how many units are being built?
So that's a proposal for a hundred and seventy six age restricted townhomes. And there's, but when we get into the the final plan discussion, just since there will be some new individuals involved. There's lots of other kind of township benefit considerations that that go into that project, such as. Contributions into the township's intersection improvement funds. As well as from stormwater perspective and a variety of other things. Mr. Etchikin had also stated that there's the dedication of three acres necessary for the intersection. That's happening at no cost. So there's lots of illness to that plan, as well as permanent preservation of the remaining two hundred something acres of the golf course. That go along with that project. So we'll get to make sure that we reintroduce all of those back in the community benefit items that were worked into that preliminary.
Does anyone else have any questions?
Hi, everyone. I live at twenty six sixteen Bonnie Lane. I live right in Ward Three. You know, I I listened to the last planning meeting a little bit and. I have a huge concern about these apartments. I I would agree with Ruth that. Two hundred and fifteen units is is still too much. To me, I I I couldn't care less whether, you know, you're opening things up recreationally or. Or having parking spots or anything like that. The amount of noise that we have in our neighborhood is beyond. I just heard the sirens. I hear them every single day. I I can't imagine any more traffic being added into our township, and I think that. Two hundred plus units is just, it's just way, way too much, and it's more than we can handle. It's it's not, it's not a question, it's just a comment.
Thank you so much for coming. Does anyone else have any questions? Only Zoom one?
It does not appear, sir.
No, but if there is anyone that's calling at my phone, if you hit star nine, that also gives us the message that you raised your hand. But I don't see any more at this time.
Okay, even though I represent Ward Six, I was asked by a lot of my residents in Ward Six. That they would like to be a part of a public hearing process because. So that their opinions could be heard regarding this matter, but. Before we move forward, it requires a motion. Oh, okay.
Sorry, I did have a question.
Please come up and speak with me.
Hi, I'm Lauren Calfe in thirty two thirty one Maple Road. So just clarification. If there are three text amendments on the table, right?
So ultimately, it's one text amendment that would provide for changes to. Within that text amendment, there's three density bonus concepts, as well as the provision for how to deal with the gross floor area.
Okay, so it's a package. It can't be broken up. Okay, so solicitor Rice earlier, you had said to Denise, she said, well, what if we just. Said no, is that like an interpretation of what you said, what would happen next? And and I think you said, well, then they just wouldn't build it. But I'm wondering, you know, can, is there still an opportunity? I don't know what the process is. I guess that's my main question. Can we?
Why don't I explain that? This is not a judicial hearing, this is a legislative act by the. Tonight is just to authorize this ordinance to be advertised for a public hearing. This is not a public hearing. On the ordinance tonight. This is just to authorize it to be advertised next month. So in December, you'll have a public hearing. You know, on the ordinance, and if people want to make suggestions. Question I always ask is what if they don't build it? The way I understood it is if the ordinance gets adopted and then they don't build it, which is what happened last time, what would happen? And the answer is nothing. They're not gonna build it. The ordinance will be on the books. And it'll stay on the books until someone else comes along that wants to build. You know, it won't go away. It'll be on the books. So that's what happened last time. There was an ordinance adopted with the scepter and it sat because, you know, the market. Went down and the developer was unwilling to. Unable to meet the requirements, set the garage went away, so they came back with this second iteration. To develop that. So so that that was, you know, what if they, ordinance gets passed and they don't build? We could go through the whole process and I. Could decide. Because of the market, they're not gonna be able to do it all the time.
But if we, if that ordinance is passed, it's on the books, as you said, meaning the next. Time something is proposed, that's automatically piled into the zoning. It's already. Part of the accepted zoning for that.
Yeah, this, yeah, this ordinance, if it gets adopted, it's gonna be on the books. You know, until it gets changed. You know, or if it gets changed.
Okay, and then I had, I thought I heard something else about engineering, about the stormwater engineering that. They were going beyond what was would be required.
I'll I'll practice some engineering now. Engineers love to practice law. So I know, that's why. So you start with the site and there's an assumption made that it's meadow. Grass, no blacktop on it, no buildings on it. We know that's not true. But then the stormwater flows from there. They are doing, and I guess that's ten percent. Ten percent, they're doing, this ordinance requires them to consider forty percent of the site. Four times what the requirement would be under the federal and state regulations, which means they're gonna have to over-engineer the site. And build more stormwater than anybody else would have to in Lower Moreland for any other project. So that's in this ordinance, and and that was, you know, after the developer submitted the petition. You know, our instruction from the board and the planning commission was to. You know, some of these things like the solver is nice and the 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 plugin for the, you know, the cars are nice, but. Stormwater was the issue. So that's where we went and and made the recommendations for the forty percent. And also, as part of this, for the additional net density of five acres, forty percent meadow condition. Stormwater improvements including stream restoration basin construction to retrofit green roof tops. Are may maybe their honor off site. So we're looking at, and the developer knows this because we, you know, we told them that we're looking off site to deal with. Stormwater because that's the valley, right? Comes down on both sides of the hill, and that's the. The point where you can really make some impact, but it might have to be up on the golf course. This developer may have to go through stormwater improvements on the golf course or off site where it'll actually make some impact. If you just do it on site. Probably not gonna work, but but that's a detail that comes out during the conditional use and the land development plan. Tim would tell you there's two or three locations off site that there could be significant stormwater improvements. So that's trade off, that five units density, some really significant stormwater improvements to try to fix that area. Fix it, but to to make it less of a problem when you have everything. So that's the stormwater part of this, which was not in this when we started this original proposal from.
Yeah, okay, I just wanted to understand that piece. We'll we'll let Tim know that you're in okay stand. Thank you.
Can you do me one favor to just stand upon for everybody here, public hearing versus conditional use? And without being different, we're relaxed. Well, this is not the final stop.
The the, like I said, this is legislative, this is a law ordinance. That is proposed by a landowner or any landowner that proposes a zoning ordinance. That, you know, goes through this process, has to be reviewed by the planning commission and the board. And the county planning commission under the state municipalities planning code. So if it comes back and it gets adopted, that's a law that now it's at on the books. It doesn't approve anything else. No plans approved, no buildings approved, nothing's approved, but that ordinance says in it. That in order to go to the next step, you have to file conditional use application. Which is a like a zoning hearing board application, like a special exception. It's a quasi judicial proceeding where developer has to present testimony and evidence that he meets the ordinance's requirements. So we'll have a court reporter here for that. This board will sit as judges. And as they know, I tell them to think of themselves as judges with, you know, powdered wigs and robes and the whole thing. And they can't be discussing it outside of the hearing. I instruct them, someone calls you about this conditional use, wants to talk to you or. Yell at you or whatever, you can't discuss it because you're judges. You can't call it an ex parte communication. It could taint the hearing. So that's, and I'm pretty strict about that because I've had issues in the past where. Let the official decides to go look at the property in the middle of a hearing. Doesn't tell anybody, maybe meet some residents out there, and the developer finds out that. And you have a problem. So that's a quasi judicial proceeding. The board will hear all the testimony and evidence, and then they will make a decision with conditions on that, on the plan. So that gives them zoning approval then, under the ordinance. Then they have to file land development plan. This is all under the state municipalities planning code. So that's when they do. More fine tuning and engineering, this and Tim will be very busy during that process and Steve will be very busy. And our traffic engineer will be very busy because they're gonna have to do a lot of engineering. Pendot will be involved. D E P will be involved, sewer authority will be involved. So that's where all the. Rubber meets the road and all the details come out. Then that's your land development plan that this board votes on. So there's three things the board votes on. The legislation, conditional use. Decision, and then the land development plan, and that plan is what gets recorded at the at the courthouse in our state. That's the plan forever and ever unless they come back and change it, and there's conditions on that. We were talking about some of the conditions. You're gonna have to have three thousand square feet of commercials. That's gonna be on the plan. You can't have twenty five hundred square feet, you gotta have three thousand square. So that's, it's a, it's a long, drawn out, for the landowner would say painful process. But that's, you know, the way it's done in in Pennsylvania. Many caught substantial profit.
Does anyone else from the panel have any questions about this process?
I was actually on the Zoom call, but I was really close and started to hear the sirens and surround sound. It'll be sort of like being in a IMAX theater. So I just came over so I could hear what was being said. And so a question and maybe. Oh, yes, Michelle Schwartz, two five four four Walton Road. Thanks. We have an approved project catty corner to the proposed B T. For age restricted townhomes, and I'm wondering, as a compromise, could there be some sort of. Age restriction placed on apartment style dwelling as well to sort of supplement what's going in. Those are going to be very luxurious, expensive townhomes for fifty five plus. But what we're lacking among Auburn County and in this country in general are affordable apartments for fifty five plus. Given what we talked about, about the use of the land and how would it impact us, the water. Traffic, the third issue is the schools, and I think we might wanna consider some sort of. If possible, restriction on age that would also prevent a deluge of school aged children entering that dwelling. So to consider as far as our needs as a community, it would add value as well. And just food for thought and what's maybe. What needs to go in to make that property or any development appropriate that for age restricted use fifty five plus?
I absolutely hear your concerns, and I think everyone on board hears your concerns, Michelle. And actually, I think it did as developer at the initial sketch. When. The fifty five and over and and making a guess and maybe just coming over. Apartments, and he did answer at that point in time, but you do leave their online mail, and I think with it at the hearing process with that.
Yeah, that that would be. That would be an issue that would come up, but what I, what I heard the suggestion was. When it comes to age, you're allowed to discriminate in favor of old people, right? You can say. This apartment can only be fifty five and over. That's it. You can't discriminate against thirty year olds that have children. Say, you know, we're not. We're gonna put a condition that you can't have school age children. But saying that, and the developer, I don't think is. Would agree to a fifty five and over. However, he did say on multiple occasions that a lot of the people that are will move in to this will be fifty five and over. Because he has another project in Washington Township, and that's a large percentage. I mean, investigative, right?
We're predicting, right? And so if I'm going off of what we have now, which is Carson Terrace and Meadowbrook, that's. We have a lot of kids there. There are a lot of kids at Carson Terrace, and there's a lot of kids at Meadowbrook. I have lived at Meadowbrook, and when I lived there, we had neighbors moving from New York just to go to the school system in Abington. Like solely, they moved there for that purpose. And I think this is just an opportunity for those who can access Lower Moreland based on our current property. Like there's a dress of property, it's like nothing available, and there's certainly nothing affordable at the whole. This will be a great entry for those families that are looking to get into the school district and just, I don't think they would hesitate to pack it in. Not just from northeast Philly, but from New York as well and anywhere else. People need a good school district. So I think. We need fifty five plus housing in America. We really need it in Montgomery County. We really need it here in Lower Moreland. I think it would encourage our M D nesters who can't go anywhere because there's nowhere to go at an affordable price. Current houses here are going for five, six hundred thousand. Yes, you're paying twelve, thirteen thousand dollars in taxes, but if you're. No mortgage, that comes down to like eleven hundred dollars a month. That's pretty good rent. And you're not gonna get that elsewhere, and you're certainly not gonna downsize and pay more. So having an opportunity to go into an apartment style complex that's fifty five and over catering to you. Is an important opportunity that we can provide and maybe press that onto the builder can. Provide a compromise that makes us all happy.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have any question?
Hellvender, eight nine six, Red Wing Lane. Speaking restrictions, are there any restrictions for renting? Like, all these like one bedroom, two bedroom units are going in. I'm just scared that so we're gonna buy a couple of them and run them out.
They're all rentals. And can we talk about price point? The last revision was that price is that they did the projections.
I wouldn't want to represent that all the developers that have. Michael, it sounds like you're underwater.
Oh, you can't hear me? Sorry. So the rental rates will 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 average twenty two hundred dollars a month or higher.
So that's a twenty two hundred dollars from the sewer monster.
Is that for one bedroom or two?
Well, on, on average, it'll come out to be about 2,200 a month.
2,200 on average between the ones and twos.
Yeah.
And, and the one thing, if I can just point out, you know, you know, i- i- identity is issue. Traffic from retail is more extensive traffic from this development. So, so if, if, if there was more retail, there would be more traffic.
So, we have really bad connection with you, so maybe, do you have a phone or something else?
Chris is gone.
This will not be ideal, but he's on speaker on line.
So the average rental, you know, the average rental rate will be $2,200 or higher. And as, as far as the traffic is concerned, the more retail, the more traffic you would have. Retail generates more traffic than these apartment complexes. And the other thing is, you know, it's, it's gonna be 50 50, one bedroom to two bedrooms. So, or 113 one bedrooms. And there will only be 112 two bedrooms. So, so the 113 one bedrooms, you're only allowed to have two people in the unit per bedroom. And unless somebody says they're gonna live with their kid in their bedroom, you're not gonna get kids in one bedroom. And as I put up before, we don't have anyone with children living in any of our new apartments in one bedroom units. Only in two bedroom units. So then you're down to the 112 two bedroom units. And we do get a lot of seniors who want two bedroom units because. I, you know, I oftentimes, they, they tell me they want another room to be able to separate in. So you're really looking at a minimal amount of, if they throw all the charts and everything else. But when you're looking at the potential for school children, it's really at the 112 units. And we always find that they get rented very quickly, very early by the seniors. So it's just another poignant fact, but if you push it towards more retail, that does actually entail more traffic and you're trying to, you're kind of. You know, validate that fact.
Are there any other questions for Michael before I went?
Mr. Markman, Denise Curran, I have a question for you. Is there any way of asking for resident Michelle Schwartz, Schwartz? Is there any way to designate, uh, any of these two bedrooms? Maybe even half of them, uh, 55 and older? I mean, I don't know. I mean, I'm not, I'm not in this industry, but I don't, I don't know.
Legally, that's not permitted. You either have to be all 55 or older or none. You can't, you can't separate it out. And part of the reason that this site doesn't necessarily work for 55 or older. Because, and, and no one seems to be bringing it up, but it's a transit oriented development. So when people start going and working downtown again, you're on the train station. So a lot of people live here because they can jump on the train and not have to drive. And when your traffic engineer took this into account, he actually didn't even take into account the fact that it was a TOD, a transit oriented development. And a certain percentage of the people would in fact be taking the train to work and not driving. He assumed that it was not a transit oriented development and it still, still had less traffic than. What we had presented in the previous, um, mass station of this.
I totally understand your concept, I was just trying to think outside the box.
Yeah, no, if we could do that, we would because we generally get probably at least half of those units. The two bedrooms will be 55 and older, presented to the one bedrooms too, but you're just not allowed to break it up that way legally. It has to be all or nothing.
Just trying to think outside the box and, and, uh.
I understand.
And, uh. Answer to the residents also at the same time. Thank you so much, appreciate it. Does anyone else have any questions on our board for Mr. Markman? Does anyone from the public have any questions for Mr. Markman? We have a, we have a question from someone.
Thank you Denise, Tim Burrows, three one three seven Maple Road. Just a couple of points I would like to make to Mr. Markman. He talks about transit oriented and I have, uh, mentioned this before. If anyone has driven past any of the train stations. Or ridden the train. Anytime since the virus hit. They will notice that all the train stations along the west trend were lined. And I say this because I know, because I've ridden it down to University of Pennsylvania, they're ghost towns. Uh, unfortunately, the new. Way of doing business is work promoted. It's true. I- i- it's just a, it's just a truth. So as far as the transit oriented things. Uh, I think that really is a moot point. Now, Mr. Markman, in all fairness to him, represents BET. And I think we all know what BET stands for. Bruce E. Toll. And, um, in all fairness, uh, Bruce has done a, a great job of grooming you, Mr. Markman. And I know you're invested. In this project, but I'm just gonna stop and say, look, we're not here, I don't believe we are. Here to discuss. Mr. Markman's project because. That's down the road a bit. What we are here to discuss. Is an amendment, am I correct?
It's, the, the motion, the motion before the board is to authorize the advertise for a hearing, that's it.
So.
We're just authorizing it for a hearing.
Yeah, so we can talk ad nauseam.
At the hearing.
At the hearing. So, I mean, all, I think all we're saying right now, you know, everybody wants to speak, I get that, including me. And. I like to talk. So, um, I think we should maybe able and move forward. I, I, I don't wanna prevent anyone from speaking, believe me. I really, I really don't. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Markman. Okay, does anyone else in the public have any questions?
There was one, and that's.
I'm going to hang up for Michael and rejoin.
Close in front of us is a motion. To authorize advertising a public hearing to consider. It's DA number 2103 and the public hearing will be for Tuesday, December 14th, 2021. At 7:00 PM, which would be our December commission meeting, so I will make that motion.
In the motion, the second to authorize the public hearing, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Yeah, I saw it, thank you.
We haven't opposed.
Oh, I didn't hear it, sorry. One post for the record.
Next item on my agenda is review and consider offer of dedication, it's PPG Pine Road and it's Pine and Red Lion Roads. Number 1207. Uh, on August 2nd, the developer of the residential project at the corner of Pine and Red Lion Roads submitted a request. For the Board of Commissioners to accept dedication of the public improvements related to the project. I can't believe that we are at this, at the, almost, you know, at the end here. Uh, at this project, um, engineer Woodrow prepared a punch list. Of items to be addressed prior to the consideration of the request for dedication. And, um, his officer, his office, uh, provided the list. To the developer on August 12th and it was well within the NPC's mandated timing. The following agreements are included in the offer of dedication. We have deeds of dedication for public roads, which is Bailey Circle, Jackson Drive, Morgan Run and Peyton Drive. We have declaration of right of way easement for pine and red line frontages, sanitary sewer easements in specific locations. Stormwater drainage easements in specific locations, site distance easements on two lots. Stormwater basements, basin easements on one lot. Nature resource easements for the open space lots. And, um, engineer Woodrow is working on the developer to close the final items from the punch list. Including the posting of the 18 month maintenance bond and minor landscaping and sun entry repairs. So right now, um, as of this week, we have four resolutions. Uh, for accepting the deeds of dedication for public roads that have been, that are in our agenda book. Like I said, um, the development really looks beautiful. I know people have moved in there. And they are very happy. I actually had some other developers that have moved from my development in there and are very happy. So that's where we're at, we have four resolutions, um, in our book. The first resolution. Is resolution number 2021 dash 28 is the acceptance of deed of dedication for Morgan Run. And it is the acceptance of the deed of dedication and attached is the exhibit A. Does anyone have any questions regarding this deed of dedication? I'm on board.
Can you? I was just gonna say, can you just, can you summarize things?
I can summarize it.
What, I mean, what that entails, when you say we're dedicating, just can you tell the public what that means? Yeah, let me, let me just explain that. So developer gets that project approved, posts money for the roads and all the amenities, sells the houses. And at the end of all that, he wants to close out the project, that's what's happening. When he closes out the project. The streets that are gonna be accepted by the township as public roads have to be accepted formally by resolution. So you have four streets, Steve's very excited about the new streets. That are being accepted for dedication tonight and the township will then own those streets, will have to plow them, will have to. You know, uh, repair them et, et, et cetera. This, the resolutions get recorded at the courthouse and get sent to PNDOT. PNDOT actually pays the township liquid fuels funds, they'll come out with a wheel, right Steve? Measure the road and pay 20 cents on a dollar, something like that. Some, some sum of money goes on the liquid fuels list. So the township annually will get money from PNDOT for all their public roads. These four will be added to that list. So that's part of the dedication, the deed of dedication is the deed of the road bank. And the other thing that's occurring is all the sewer lines and the, uh. There's some site distance easements, the intersections. Someone tries to put a sign there or a shrub, the township will have the right to remove it, so the site distance isn't impeded. And there's also a large piece of open space, which the township is putting a, uh, restriction on, so that can never be developed. So that's a natural resource easement that's in here. So those documents are all being done simultaneously, but the four. Resolutions tonight, they're on the board's agenda, are for the four public streets. They have to be formally approved, reported. Designated in the minutes and then they will be, um, new public roads.
And, I mean, Steve's, Steve's to maintain. So that's what's in front of us, so we have four resolutions for the board. So, thank you. Resolution number 202128 is acceptance of deed of dedication for Morgan Run. So that is on the 18th day of October, 2021, PPG Pine Road LLC. And this is the deed of dedication with attached exhibit A, twice the amount of change, please.
Yes, this is, yeah, motion to.
I will make, make a motion to approve the resolution number 2021 dash 28. Acceptance of deed of dedication of Morgan Run with the attached exhibit A.
It's the motion, the second to accept the dedication for. President's number 2021 dash 28, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
The next is. It is resolution number 2021 dash 29 is the acceptance of deed of dedication Peyton Drive. And this is also with the, uh, attached acceptance of deed of dedication and it's attached. With attached exhibit A, like to. Make a motion. To approve this resolution, 2021 dash 2029.
It is the motion, the second for the acceptance of the deed of dedication for Peyton Drive, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Yeah, I saw it, thank you.
The next resolution is resolution number 2021 dash 30 is the acceptance of deed of dedication of Bailey Circle. With the attached exhibit A, which is a deed of dedication, like to take, make a motion to accept the resolution.
It is the motion, the second for 212130 for Bailey Circle, acceptance of deed of dedication, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Yeah, I saw it, thank you.
And the next is resolution number 2021 dash 31, acceptance of deed of dedication for Jackson Drive. With the attached exhibit A. To make a motion to accept this.
It is the motion, the second, uh, resolution number 2021 dash 31, acceptance of deed of dedication for Jackson Drive, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Commissioner, understanding that the vote is complete, there was a public comment that we saw on Zoom.
Oh, no.
That was still available.
It was with the screen name JS, if you still have a question, if you would like to unmute. You know, he had his, he or she had their hand raised twice.
Was it regarding this or?
Yes, it was for during this period.
Okay.
JS, you are unmuted if you wanted to make a comment. Okay. They've unmuted themselves, so I'm guessing.
So for whoever JS is, if there was a question, please feel free to give me a call at the township building anytime soon.
The next is the building officials report, uh, for October. There were 850 permits collected year to date, 780 permits collected last year to date. Eighty-nine total permits per month issued for October, six commercial renovations. Uh, 23 certificate of occupancies, uh, total inspections, 100, was 136. 130 residential, six commercial, uh, complaint violation, notice to comply was 29 total. Uh, use and occupancy was two business UNOs and eleven residential. Busy month for the box. And, um, finally. On my agenda items, um, my liaison positions are planning commission and community events. I do not believe there's a planning commission meeting this month. On, on schedule at all, um, and EJ, we don't have a thing.
Considering it's, it fell on Thanksgiving, definitely not on that day. I wanted to wait until at least next week for the meeting with some country club, but that's probably not.
Correct, by that time, I mean, there wouldn't be.
Right, there wouldn't be. Okay, and, um, under community events, um, our open house in October with the Hines Valley. Fire company was wonderful, we wanna thank the fire company. And we had pumpkin pie for the kids and the kids had a great time. And special thanks to the flower station, which donated pumpkins to us. And, um, our other event for October was a drive through Trump or Treat. And it was amazing, everybody had a great time. Special thanks to Steve Werner and Public Works. Mark Bellamow, our board of commissioners, EJ Lee, our assistant manager, Chris Huffman. LMPD. L N P D. Thanks, Chief. Honey's Valley Library, Beth, Pam and her team, Honey's Valley Fire, Brennethan Ambulance, Karen Wood. We joined forces with Brennethan and it was a wonderful community partnership. Brennethan Fire, PTA, HBAA, and everything was great. The kids had a great time. It was so nice after a long stretch of COVID to actually have an event that was, you know, everyone was together. E J and I already spoke about it. We have to save the date, which is October twenty-second, twenty twenty-two. So save the date. And in, in November, we have the Forest Keys Memorial unveiling at Lowermoreland Park, which is gonna be the day after Thanksgiving, Friday, November twenty-sixth at three thirty PM. The raid date is going to be Saturday, November twenty-seventh at ten AM, and it will be at Lowermoreland Park. We cheap lane entrance by the basketball courts. And the only other thing I have on my agenda item is we had in October, quick, I will quickly, we had October, the Valley Forge Tourism came in and gave a quick presentation to us about the, the businesses and how the business, the businesses could, you know, our, enhance our corridor, enhance business economic redevelopment. So E J and I had met with one of the representatives to get a little bit more background and it was really wonderful meeting. And hopefully she will highlight our township in a positive way for us and some of the new businesses. But it will be after the new year in twenty twenty-two. And she, she's also gonna reach out hopefully after the new year to some of the businesses and also talk to them about what their opportunities might be. So there's a lot of them and I think it's a great opportunity for them if they wanna, you know, go down some of the, some of the paths. So she will, she's gonna reach out to all of them and due to the holidays that are coming up, she's gonna wait until the new year. So that concludes my agenda for this evening, and I think that's a nice exciting new venture for all of them. So thank you, Chris, because I think this was a mission that you and Reed and past chairman and vice chair, past chairman De Martinez and like, and Doc Sartor was vice chair, and now you are all still working on. And, and it's just like a continued mission. COVID hit and then, you know, it's just a long time. So it was nice to have her come in and keep, you know, follow up, you know, I, you know.
The efforts continue.
The efforts keep continuing. So it was really nice. And thank you, E J, too, for setting this up.
And thank you, Commissioner.
That concludes my agenda for this evening. Thank you.
The Chair now recognizes Commissioner Howes, Chair of the Public Property Committee.
My Public Property Committee has no report, but my neighbor, our, our, the Harvard Historic Architecture Review Board, that was brought before us this month was the, the property that used to be those electric supply store at twenty-two eighty-three Huntington Pike. We're trying to convert it, or the owner would like to convert it into a fruit and vegetable store essentially. We have down a farmer's market, you know, something similar to that. They already own a fruit and vegetable store just by, just as an aside. So they want to improve the storefronts, who's insulated windows and doors, replace the signs, close off the, the back garage door and install a sliding door to make it more handicap accessible. New parking spaces will be provided and the exterior will be painted and patched. So we're taking what is essentially at this moment a light property and we go to bring it back and make it look nice. So the historic board recommends the issuance of a certificate of appropriateness to allow the following improvements, insulation, new floor板, storefronts, including sliding glass doors and windows, new off-street parking, and painting and patching of the storefront. We'd like to make a motion that we issue a certificate of appropriateness for those items hold off signs until zoning relief has been provided because they want to exceed the current zoning regulations.
Does anybody have any questions?
I'm excited for this project. I believe the, the owner is here. Thank you much for investing in our township. It's been vacant for a while and I'm actually really looking forward to seeing it.
How soon?
As soon as possible.
Well, we, we miss any market, yeah, yeah. Does the, does anyone out there have any questions? Anyone here in the building?
I do not see any hands raised.
And nothing on Zoom?
There's been motion and second to issue a certificate of purpose. So describe all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Oh, I am, my, my report's, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Commissioner Howes. The Chair now recognizes Commissioner Canalley, Chair of the Ordinance Committee.
Thank you, Chairman Sir. So the first thing I have on my agenda note is the fireworks ordinance. Last month, the board authorized advertising attached ordinance, which reiterates or expands upon the state's fireworks law. Solicitor Rice is office prepared to have advertisement as prescribed by the law. I have no more questions. Is there any discussion from the board on the ordinance?
Should we give them?
I'm going to, but first I'm letting you have a chance. Do you have anything you want to say? Anything from the public on the fireworks?
So just as a quick, and we'll get to you in a second, Bill. There's a quick summary for what this ordinance does. Following complaints from this past July fourth, there's already a state fireworks law that expanded access to fireworks and created a lot of local issues. So this ordinance kind of reiterates a lot of what is in that stable, but then also goes a bit beyond. So there's most properties in Lowermoreland will not be eligible to set off what are called consumer fireworks. And then separately to that, if there is any entity that wants to do a larger display fireworks event that would require a permit and a whole other review process, and this ordinance creates those standards. But very simply, from a consumer fireworks perspective, the main takeaway is that it is limited to right, well, just looking at the, the distance which the, so it's a hundred fifty, the ordinance has a type of two hundred, so we'll make sure that the right one is done. There's one fifty in the restrictions on all fireworks, but the copy that has, then the consumer fireworks restriction still has two hundred feet of knockback structure. We had modified that to the one fifty. But so essentially a hundred fifty feet from any structure, property line, road. So most properties of Lowermoreland would not be able to provide that distance. So if on, really the Fourth of July or on New Year's Eve, you have neighbors that are shooting off fireworks and that is upsetting, call us and we will go try to take care of it.
The chief of fireworks, this is not personally.
Fireworks.
So there's no question, Chris.
I got most of it. Just the timeframe for the, I mean, the fireworks. Like when, you know, having a class or few, yeah.
After XMPM, except on the Fourth of July or New Year's Eve.
So all night long for that? Any other questions tonight?
Motion to approve.
It's on the bottom, seven fifty-nine.
Motion to approve.
It is a motion to approve ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash seven fifty-nine. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
So this brings me to my first liaison report, which is the Honey's Valley Library. I'm pleased to announce that they fired three additional staff. Their staffing is starting to get back up, which will help increase hours. Again, they have good community events. They Zoom and in person. Go ahead and check out their website and then give more information on that. That's all I have for that liaison.
Okay.
I'll introduce you for your.
Coming back to you. Okay. The Chair now recognizes Commissioner Canalley, alternate Chair of the Public Safety Committee.
All right. So the first thing on my agenda for this one is the legal notice for the zoning hearing board, which will take place Thursday, November eighteenth, twenty twenty-one at seven PM. There's a few things on the agenda that night. Application twenty twenty-one. Application is of Shabat Israel Center, Inc., twenty-seven fifty-five Philmon Avenue, Unit One Hundred. Honey's Valley IPA seeks relief from the terms of the zoning ordinance of Lowermoreland Township, Chapter Two Eight, Section seven oh four G two. Bearing to allow religious temple menorah, the effects of buildings fringed measuring eleven point four square feet. That can also seek to interpretation that the menorah is exempt, not considered a sign and therefore is not counted towards the number of signs permitted. In the alternate, that can request the bearings from Section seven twelve E two A to allow two signs where only one is permitted and exceed the maximum thirty-two square feet to permit one thirty-six square foot sign, which identifies the synagogue and the menorah that measures eleven point four square feet. There's also a vote on another application twenty-one twenty and additional vote on application number twenty-one nineteen. There may be some discussion and that's pretty much it for the zoning board on that. Well, I'll turn it over to Bob Shattuck if he has anything he'd like to add. No, I think you covered it very good. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Next thing, somebody up under Public Safety is the Chief's Report. Chief.
Okay, for this month's Police Department report, we investigated a number of crimes this past month. We had two assaults that our officers handled. We had three cases of harassment, five cases of disturbances. We had a couple of serious offenses that we're investigating. We had one reported rape and one reported strong arm robbery. We had another rash of theft from autos up in Abidale and down off of Clearview as well. So we're, we're investigating those and hopefully we'll get some evidence back from the process deals. We had a few criminal mischiefs. We had our kind of standard fare of drug and alcohol crimes. We did have a total of seven DUIs in the month of October. Four cases of disorderly conduct. And again, we always caution our elderly residents, be aware of fraud and flimflam attempts via phone or internet. We had one warrant arrest out of Philadelphia and a couple of case updates. With one case update, we had an assault from July of twenty twenty-one. It was an investigation into a sexual assault. The actor was identified, arrested for aggravated indecent assault, sexual assault, and involuntary deviant sexual intercourse. That case has been put off for prosecution. Just so the residents know, we had a trial this week, subject assault on one of our officers a year ago in the course of a rash of theft from autos. That trial went off this week. Our officers did a tremendous job testifying. It will be coming in for a verdict on the seventeenth. So we'll make sure we post that once we know, hopefully he's found guilty on all charges. We ran a DUI checkpoint at twenty-seven fifty-five Philmon Avenue on September twenty-first. During that checkpoint, we had nine hundred ninety-seven cars stopped by our police officers. Sixteen operators were detained and tested. Three were arrested for DUI alcohol, one for DUI drugs. In addition, four suspects were charged with drug possession. There were verbal warnings for inspection, forty-eight for seatbelt violations, twenty-nine for equipment violations, and three cases of child, children not in a safety seat that our officers gave warnings for and got the children secured. We had a great community event October third, first ever biking with the blue. That event was a great child of Officer Kelly Heiss, one of our newer officers. It was a really nice day with the community. Some of you were there. We handed out water ice after the event. Kids rode with our mountain bike patrol down the library road trail. It was really, really great event. Currently, we have going on the community event Future Crime Fighters in Action. So we have a crime scene investigation school for teenagers. We run that in conjunction with the library. Six weeks long, so I think we're in the third week now. Again, kids get to see what law enforcement's about, how to investigate crimes. They did blood splatter, fingerprints, things like that. So it's a nice community program that we're running. In addition, we also, I'll talk about it more next month. We had the graduation of our first ever Citizens Police Academy. I want to talk about that more in detail next month. It was an amazing event. I got to participate in the graduation. Everyone here, make sure you follow us on social media and get a lot of information, all the different programs that we're doing. We had the, the honor of participating in the Trump or Treat. We had prepared two hundred and some bags of candy and that was gone in about thirty minutes. So we wound up having to beg, borrow candy from E J over there and went on for another two hours. It was a great event. Couple of things that I'm working on, as you see, my face is unshaven. That's because we're in the middle of our No Shave November community charity event. So officers are allowed to donate money to a charity for breast cancer awareness and officers can grow, grow in their facial hair as long as they contribute to the charity. So you'll be seeing us a little scruffy for a while. We're working on a, a community event in December. It's not on your, your report that I sent to you. It just was proposed to me by Sierra Volkerd, our first K nine officer and Kermit. We're working on a ugly sweater run for early in December. One mile run on Redline Road. It'll be a joint, it'll be a run by our K nine unit. It'll be a fundraiser community event. So you, you know, social media, you can get all the information on that. It should be a great time. I will be there for sure. It's gonna be both for running. I'll walk with you. Yeah, well, you can protect that. So really, that's it for my report. If anyone has any questions, we'll be happy to answer.
Commissioner Howes had an idea. If you wanted to bring your graduates of your county here before the board, would be happy to present them with a certificate of completion on your behalf. If that's something possibly we'd like to do.
Yeah, we would love to do that. I'm sure many of them would be honored. So thank you for that offer.
Chief, I gotta say that that being blue bike ride was truly amazing. My kids loved it, built a bike ride, especially.
So it's already getting stolen by a couple of police departments.
Yeah. Not as much of a DUI checkpoint, but it's an awesome experience. So many different townships coming together. It's not just Lowermoreland. Like you kind of skimmed over that and all the organization that's done by outside companies as well as people who volunteer. It's not just police department, you know, there's the ambulance there, there's volunteers, people collecting evidence. So it was a really nice organization.
I mean, so people that don't know, it's the Eastern Montgomery County DUI Task Force. So it's a collaboration of all the various townships around here. We all send officers to different locations throughout Eastern Montgomery County. It's run by Abington Police as far as administrating it for our region. And Lowermoreland, we have pretty busy checkpoints generally speaking. But it's nice to get to work with officers from all over the region. So you're right. And there's community volunteers and it's a really good event to make our roadways safe on the weekends.
Thank you.
Any questions for the Chief, Board, Public?
Good evening. October was Fire Prevention Month, basically for the fire department. And for the first two weeks, we reached well over almost seven hundred children. We did fire prevention programs every day, preschool, St. Albert. We did fire prevention programs at Gloria Day, preschool, St. Albert's, Pine Road, uh, Pine Road Elementary, and Valley Christian. We had about eight or nine firefighters that did the presentation. Like I said, we had a, we had a real good time with that. We had our open house on the, uh, ninth. We had over six hundred people attend that. That was one of our, our better years for attendance. We also wanted to thank again the, uh, order commissioners for thanking us for the volunteers, for the actions during the, uh, tropical storm Ida, for the two days of fire rescue calls. We had a small house fire on eight hundred block of Redwood Lane. Uh, we had a large tree up against our home. Uh, fire was extinguished, and there was some minor damage to the interior of the home. On, uh, Sunday, October twenty-fourth, we had a gentleman who had his foot stuck in the rollers, and the rail used for the car wash down the length of pipe. Personnel, uh, rescued him and got his, un-un-untrapped his foot. Uh, I'm not sure in his condition. I know he was doing well the last time I went down and talked to the manager. We had a mutual aid call in Lower South Hampton to a car into a home, into a building, which then caught fire. We were there to assist with manpower. Uh, we also want to thank, uh, Public Works, uh, for letting us, uh, participate in the trunk or treat. We handed out like candy. And on October thirty-first, Halloween night, the fire company divided into two teams, and we drove around giving out candy to some of the, uh, trick or treaters in the township. So we did a lot of P R, uh, during the month of October, and again, follow us, follow our website, and follow our, our social media as well. On emergency management issues, uh, Deputy Emergency Management Coordinator Rich Worthington and I had some after-action reports, and the after-action meetings with, uh, Brinathen and some staff. So we're going to start a timeline on getting some of the ideas and suggestions completed if we ever, ever have to open up the E O emergency operations center again, like during storms or any kind of earth emergency township. We're, uh, Rich Worthington is actually starting the, uh, active shooter or active intruder drills again, where we go to different communities and do active intruders. We also did the Lowermore High School. We did a lockdown drill, uh, last month, where we have a, uh, person come in, uh, who's not supposed to be there, and we work with the police department and emergency management to take care of the situation. As far as COVID, uh, we're just monitoring what Montgomery County Health's doing right now. Uh, we sent out a, a boatload of information to all the first responders for the booster shot, and we've all, to all the, uh, first responders, and we've also sent information out for the flu shot. So that's getting started, and we gave out the information to where the testing sites are and where you can get to shoot. Also, the schools are gearing up for their, uh, vaccine for the children this week and next week. And UNOs, we're starting, I'm back out doing UNOs on at least the first inspections, and there was only one or two fire investigations for the month. A lot of planning to do this month.
I gotta say, the open house, firehouse was a bad, kids have way less.
Yeah, fire company did an outstanding job.
Six hundred might be.
Might be, yeah, yeah. Well, we figured out between the pumpkins and all the stuff we gave out, we lost way of it, or we, it was, we gave out way of it, so.
All the pumpkins were drawn, and Bob Shawick, you were amazing helping set up, like, um, whatever you got, you and Leah.
No problem.
Great job.
Any questions from the board? Public. That's all I have. Thank you. Brings me to the final report for my final liaison, which is the zoning hearing board, which, uh, already covered with my mission report. That's all I have. Back to you, Commissioner Sir.
The chair recognizes Commissioner Blumberg, Chair of the Public Works Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Public Works Committee is the best committee with the chair. Under item L, we have review and consider authorization to bid Lower Welsh Road sidewalk. Uh, last year, during our budget process, this board set aside funds, um, I'm gonna say about sixty thousand to connect two properties on Lower Welsh that apparently, if you're walking to the train station from, uh, I'll just say my neighborhood, you have to walk out into Welsh Road. It happens all the time. And now we have these easements in place, but we're gonna have a sidewalk connection that will go to a larger development directly to the Bethair's train station. Which I can say, Mr. Barrow is very busy these days. I do ride the train, um, so the ridership is definitely picking up there. And, uh, tonight on our agenda, um, we have the, uh, the motion to authorize the bid for the construction of the sidewalks. Just to back up a bit, we did put this project, I think, from Montgomery County earlier this year at for a potential grant. We were awarding the grant. So we will be reimbursed. The project cost is sixty thousand, one hundred twenty-four dollars. We will be reimbursed forty-eight thousand ninety-nine dollars, so we were be paying a total of twelve thousand twenty-five dollars from our capital improvement traffic safety fund for this project. So with that being said, I'd like to make a motion, um, actually, ask for any questions? Any questions from the public on this one? This is a good one. Uh, motion to authorize a bid for the construction of the sidewalk along Lower.
And the motion that said to authorize bid for construction of sidewalk along Lower Welsh Road, hold this in favor, please, by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nice, thank you.
Thank you very much. Under item N, we have the Public Works Department report. This is Mr. Warner's report. Um, he's here to present that for us.
Uh, a couple of things. Loose leaf collection. It's pretty light, but we've been through the whole tactic about three, four times. Uh, this week is four, and it's, uh, one and four, which one and four we actually finished them today. We'll go back through. We are in the end of the other word, we'll go back into everything and price double the whole tactic again this week. Um, I don't know if there's a Lower Welsh Road. There's all kinds of markings on it with the, uh, traffic safety unit. We, uh, installed a ton of markings for speed reductions, so hopefully that works. Trunk or treat, I think everyone said. My guys had a great time. It was a great community event.
Did you?
Look forward to it. I love it.
You were the everybody. You were awesome.
The detail you guys went to was superb.
It was unbelievable. Thank you. I, I said this to you, but I wanted to go out with a bang for my money, so you made it happen. I want to say thank you very much, and I know that you're preparing, um, everything for soccer and basketball, so I appreciate you working with all of our, um, community teams to, to make that happen as well.
One thing I, I did forget is with COVID last year, and we didn't do is, we're snow season coming up. I wait all the commissioners if you want. Once we do get some snow, hopefully we don't, but if we do, you're all invited, you know, you can come out for a ride and see what it's like to play on snow and snow.
Are there any questions from Mr. Warner? Any questions from the public? Our hearing, I'd like to accept his report as submitted. Under item N is my liaison report. Uh, so my liaison positions are the Lowermore Township Authority, which did not meet last month, and the Building Board of Appeals, which did not meet either. Um, so that wraps up my agenda. The president is on probably a phone call for a doctor issue.
We'll give it one minute.
We'll wait for him and move on to his internal affairs committee report, so. We'll take a quick little break.
Is there anybody?
Or I could keep.
He hands it off.
So I can start, I can start, um, with Dr. Serkin's internal affairs. Uh, the first item on the agenda is review and consider approval of the minutes of October twelfth, twenty twenty-one. So for the board, does anyone have any questions or changes? I would think it looks okay.
No.
Any questions from the public regarding the minutes?
No.
Okay. I will accept. The motions, show that, uh, approve the minutes of October twelfth, twenty-one.
Second.
Thank you. The motion in second to approve the minutes of October twelfth, twenty twenty-one. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to remove the second. Next item on the agenda is review and consider approval of November, uh, approval of November twenty twenty-one bill list. Uh, on Dr. Serkin's agenda. Does anyone have any questions regarding the bill list?
No questions, but we strongly encourage everyone, attached to the agenda on the website, it's the summary of the bill list, which is always waiting for me, and it'll give you an idea of what we go through and what we're asking asked. And then if you have questions, please don't hesitate to. Thank you, Jay, for your question.
It looks, looks great. Looks amazing, you guys. For our commissioners, everything looks good on the list. Any questions from the public? Like to make a motion to approve the November twenty twenty-one bill list?
Second.
Motion has been moved in seconding. All those in favor, they signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion has been moved in seconding. Thank you. Doc Serkin?
Yeah, thank you. Uh, review and consider proposed twenty twenty-two, uh, budget. Matt Schoppen, do you want to give us an overlay, please?
I can do that. Um, so the very short answer is that there is no proposed tax increase. There is no proposed increase to your sewer rates, and there's no proposed increase for your trash pay. So everything is staying the same. The little additional summary of things that, uh, the existing village, uh, will provide, so there's thirteen funds that are the tax-supported funds of the township's governmental activities. Um, so within, uh, those funds, um, the current tax rate will provide for funding of all positions within our administration, police and public works, uh, which includes funding all of our obligations to the township through collective bargaining agreements, um, as well as, uh, funding post-retirement obligations and pensions, uh, and post-retirement medical benefits. Um, there was a small increase to the police department training budget. I'm just, that's just something that we value tremendously at this point, um, of three thousand dollars. Um, the budget includes a policy to offset the entirety of the township's building inspection and plan review program. Uh, all of the expenses with a third party for that, um, are covered through, uh, the permit fees that we collect. Um, the budget includes the policy to fund pedestrian connectivity projects at a cost of twenty percent of the township's base rotating budget, so approximately seventy dollars. Um, funding of the township annual capital program in the amount of two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, adding fifty thousand dollars to the township's rainy day general fund reserve. This is essentially what gives the township a sufficient cash balance to be able to make all of our financial obligations and payments, uh, for the first portion of the year. Um, the budget includes full funding as requested by the Huntington Valley Fire Company, um, as well as continued capital reserve planning for fire apparatus. Um, it includes partial funding of Brinathen Fire Company's request, um, so they have requested sixty-four thousand dollars based off of, uh, initial success so far with the Huntington Valley shift program. Um, I was comfortable recommending that the board decrease in that amount by fifty percent. So that is reflected, um, that also, uh, the, the budget will meet our annual debt service obligations, um, for the existing general obligation bonds that we have. The budget includes full funding provided to the Huntington Valley Library, full funding of the Brinathen Fire Company's, uh, operations request for annual service, which has its own separate village. Uh, there's an annual contribution from our Parks and Recreation Fund that essentially the cash balance at the end of the year for that fund gets transferred into Parks and Recreation Capital, so that any amount of money that is collected for park services will only ever be spent for that purpose. Um, funding of grant matches for all of the current intersection and pedestrian improvement projects that are underway, um, and then providing for capital reserve allocations for large public works equipment, our police fleet, as well as I T hardware, um, and then funding, uh, the annual allocation of the township's Valley Center Park turf replacement reserve. And then the last item, this was one that was implemented, uh, for twenty twenty-one and will carry over to twenty twenty-two. Um, the board had discontinued a transfer of a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars from our highway aid fund. This was when Solicitor Rice mentioned before, the liquid fuels, uh, tax money that comes to the township to pay to maintain roads. Previously, we used to make some of that annual operation expenses. Um, last year, the board had discontinued that, so that all of that money gets to stay and is available for paving projects. Um, so more money to pay more roads, um, than we previously would have done. So those are just some of the concepts and policies that are at the township's thirteen governmental activities funds. Then from a business-type funds, those are our sewer fund and our trash fund. Again, the current rates are staying the same for those. Um, and just some of the policy items to note there, uh, within the trash fund, this allows for the continued provision, um, of the township's e-waste and composting programs that are done at no additional cost, which would be flat, uh, trash fee that is paid, um, and that covers those programs in addition to, uh, your curbside collections of, uh, trash and recycling yard waste. Um, and then also setting aside funds to prepare for Philadelphia Water Department's Long-Term Control Plan. This is out of our sanitary sewer system. The bulk of sewer flows that go to Philadelphia. They have a multi-billion dollar obligation set up through, um, the EPA to improve, uh, their treatment facilities. As one of the larger customers for Philadelphia, we have to help offset those expenses. Um, so the sewer rates continue to provide the allocation that helps offset that. Um, the sewer fund also includes the, the policy that we will utilize the federal COVID nineteen relief funds, uh, to offset the next wave of sewer capital projects. Um, the, the kind of next batch includes upgrading sewer pump stations, uh, that are well past, uh, their useful life, um, in certain neighborhoods. One of the things of being a, uh, Huntington Valley is that it takes pump stations to push sewage around town, making sure that the facilities continue to provide that service is remarkably important. Um, and then the, the last thing is that in the twenty twenty-two calendar year, um, with much of our debt service obligation now complete on sanitary sewer fund, um, we're going to begin planning for enhanced stormwater, uh, programs that will have obligations to, uh, under our state permit. So we'll be making recommendations and doing some analysis, analysis for the board of hopefully being able to offset some of the revenue we currently collect for sanitary sewer purposes and repurposing that for stormwater projects. Um, and we'll have a lot more detail around that in collaboration with Tim Woodrow, our civil engineer, and Mike McCurry, our sanitary sewer engineer. So with that as the summary, unless there's any questions on other things that the budget will be doing, there's two specific items for the board's consideration tonight. Um, the first one, um, would be for, uh, to make a motion to authorize advertising the tax levy ordinance. So functionally, um, this is what sets the township's various tax villages. All of those will stay at the same rates. Um, but there's also an appropriation component of that ordinance, so it takes all of the specific numbers of the funds available to do all of our governmental activities. Um, and then shows how much money is available to do that and offsets that by the expenses. Um, if the board makes that motion, it will advertise the ordinance, and then that will be considered at the December meeting. Um, and then the second is that there's a resolution, which is number twenty-one dash thirty-two, uh, which we're to formally adopt the twenty twenty-two.
So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna make a motion, and then hopefully with a second, and then we'll open up her discussion before we vote. So I'd like to make a motion to authorize advertising of the tax levy ordinance, so. Any questions from the board? Any questions from the public about the twenty twenty-two? And it has been motioned in second.
I'm sorry, there is a question on Zoom.
Okay, please.
So the name is Stanley Bach.
Yeah, that's correct. Hey, sorry, uh, I live on, uh, Steven Road. Just a quick question. Um, the three thousand dollar police training, what was that, uh, used for? Just out of curiosity.
So, but I guess for specifics, the, the, the twenty twenty-one budget included a twelve thousand dollar allocation. Um, and I'll maybe ask Chief Scarrato to, to name some of the specific types of training that the department does. Um, and then the, the three thousand dollars will increase the annual allocation to fifteen thousand dollars. But chief, can you maybe give three examples of the, the types of training programs our officers might do?
Sure, we have, uh, ongoing, uh, supervisory training that we send supervisors to. We have accident investigation training programs. Uh, we have mandatory training for all twenty-six officers. Um, and Rich Worthington is our training coordinator. Uh, we have training related to preparing for predation, uh, control tactics training. Uh, those are the big ones, uh, right off the top of my head. We also have the intern program and, uh,
Great, thank you. Great, thank you.
I don't see anyone else.
Thank you. So it's been a motion to authorize second to conserve the tax levy ordinance. All those in favor, please say by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Next is a motion to approve resolution number twenty one dash thirty two, adopting the twenty twenty two budget. I'd like a motion for that. Any questions from the board for that? Any questions for the public about part two of this process?
Just want to say no show of bills and no increases on the year.
So my motion is second to approve resolution number twenty one dash thirty two, adopting the twenty twenty two budget. All those in favor, please say by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Under item R, review and consider Keensters one oh seven Public Works contract. And I'm gonna roll in item S two, review and consider Keensters one oh seven clerical contract, since you're so proud of these two.
So I guess building off of the budget process, throughout this year, the township has been negotiating with its three bargaining groups. So the one is the PBA, that's an ongoing process. And then the two that are here for consideration by the board this evening are the two employee groups who are represented by the Keensters one oh seven. And that's our public works employees, as well as our clerical staff, who work between administration, the police department, and public works. So what is in front of the board and what has been voted on and approved by each of the union groups are five-year contracts. And I guess I'll do them individually, although many of the elements are similar. So for the public works contract, and all of these totals have been incorporated into the twenty twenty two budget already. So the items which were negotiated, it's a five-year contract. So it will begin January of twenty twenty two and expire at the end of December of twenty twenty six. So I am thrilled to be able to recommend five-year agreements. We have not had agreements that long for some time. The annual wage increases included in those contracts for twenty twenty two is three point five percent. Twenty twenty three is three percent. Twenty twenty four is two point five percent. Twenty twenty five is also two point five percent. Twenty twenty six is two percent. And then the kind of most tedious item that we were working on in these negotiations was the first change to our health benefits plan design since two thousand and ten. So the new plan design will be a PPO health savings account with co-pay amounts of twenty dollars and forty dollars for your primary care and specialist appointments. And then the cost savings when it comes from institute is deductible. So we worked with our insurer, as well as both the employee groups, to determine what was an agreeable way to make this transition. So both of these employees chose a deductible value of thirty five hundred dollars for a single plan and then a max of seven thousand dollars for a plan with dependents. The way that we propose to kind of, that would add a significant cost obligation onto our employees. So being mindful of that, this is where the health savings account component comes in. And the township will be making contributions on the employees to have into these HSAs for a plan that will have a start date of January first of twenty twenty three. So between twenty twenty three and twenty twenty five, the township will deposit a hundred percent of that deductible value into this health savings account. And in twenty twenty six, it will reduce to ninety percent. But even with doing that, we're still able to realize plans that are overall premium savings, which is what is helpful overall in our budgeting process. One kind of nuanced item in the way that our federal government doesn't necessarily always work out. Some of legislative goals with the actual IRS regulations that follow them. There's a discrepancy between the Affordable Care Act and the IRS regulations in relation to the Affordable Care Act providing coverage for adult children up to the age of twenty six, while the IRS never amended its regulations for how health savings accounts can be used for those adult children. And that's all based around whether or not that adult child is being claimed as a tax dependent. So for this room, that's a scale of detail that is probably not of interest to anybody, but it is an inclusion because the funding proposal for that is that in that hypothetical, the township will provide the funding for that covered individual's expenses towards the. And then also with the savings that is generated from the health benefits plan design, we did take a look at our dental and vision plans, which had not been modified for probably decades at this point. So the contract does provide, also beginning in twenty twenty three, for increases in the dental coverage, which will allow for a maximum for covered individual for each, an annual maximum of two thousand dollars, which is currently one thousand. And the lifetime of the demonic benefit increases from a thousand to twenty five hundred dollars. Just being more realistic as to what these things actually cost for employees and providing benefits that work for them. And then the township, for any non-uniform employee, the pension plan is a defined contribution. So it essentially functions like a traditional 401K, even though it has a different IRS designation. And the contribution rate for these employees will increase in twenty twenty three from nine percent to nine and a quarter, and in twenty twenty five from nine and a quarter to nine and a half percent. Then the first item in the public works contract that is different compared to the clerical group is that our public works employees, as they work outside, there's provisions for a winter gear and boots allowance. And that would increase from two hundred fifty dollars annually to three hundred dollars, and that will be effective this January. And then there's a unique element of the public work contract that for first-year employees, the union had previously requested that those first employees have a flat rate of twenty two dollars an hour. Whereas every other year going through that wage tier was based off of a percentage of the semi-still rate. So we're proposing that that change, rather than saying that that's like twenty two dollars an hour, that it just becomes seventy percent of that semi-still rate. So those are the full details of the public works contract. And that has a resolution which would approve the agreement as well as authorize the board president and me to sign on the township's behalf. And that's resolution number twenty one dash thirty two. Then on the clerical side, it has the same provisions for the wage increases, the same provisions for the health dental and vision benefits, the same provision for the defined contribution pension. The unique element for that group, since there's not an equivalent of asking our clerical staff to work outside during the winter, we wanted to have some unique element that was incorporated into that contract. So this will provide for the ability to use sick leave almost as like family medical leave time. So of the allocation that is given to employees on an annual basis, essentially one week's work of that time may be used as family sick time, so that will be allowed for the care of an immediate family member, a child, spouse, parent. And then the contract also clarifies that sick leave may be used for the employees' own doctor's visits. So that's the one unique element to the clerical contract. So that one has a very similar resolution, which would approve the contract terms and authorize the board president and me to sign on the township's behalf. Are there any questions on those two?
Very good work. Thank you. Any questions from the board? Any questions from the public about the?
Just one. Did you say that the township's covering the deductible starting in January twenty three?
Yes, so that's when the new plan design takes effect. So that it's not covering the deductible directly, but we're providing the deductible value onto a health savings account, which for each employee will be allowed to accrue per IRS regulations. And even with doing that, there's still like all savings compared to the township's existing.
Any other questions from the public who are leaving votes?
I wanted to.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution twenty one dash thirty three, approving the collective bargain agreement with Keensters one oh seven Public Works Group. The motion that's seconded to approve resolution number twenty one dash thirty three. All those in favor, please say by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. I assume the next one's thirty five. Correct. I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution number twenty one dash thirty four, approving the collective bargain agreement with Keensters one oh seven Clerical Contract. With the motion then seconded, any questions? All those in favor, please say by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Item T, administration. Mr. Hoffman, do you want to give us any highlights, or are you about to highlight it out?
So I made, I made three notes of updates for the board, and then I promise I'll stop. So just staying in the collective bargaining world, as I mentioned, there is a third bargaining unit, which is our police department. So we do have a bargaining session scheduled tomorrow, so I'm hoping to continue making progress on these and hopefully have something for the board shortly. And then from a subdivision land development perspective, just wanted to call out that there is progress being made on the west room development on Filmon Avenue, opposite Wawa. Probably noticed the substantial site work that has started in the recent days on Red Lion Road for the high school project. And then I did reference earlier that we do have a staff meeting next week with the developers associated with the Filmon Country Club of Colleges. So to expect that notice will go out for the final plan review of that, I guess at the timing, that will be determined by the Apple and the Agri. We have that staff meeting that week. And the other note I had was just to thank the board for just the participation in the budget process. We had three meetings from the end of September through early November. So just for that process to culminate this evening is wonderful, because now I'll have a little bit more time on my.
Any questions for the manager? Assistant Manager Lee?
I think most of the items that I've reported on have already been covered. The only ones that I wanted to go over is that the winter newsletter is currently underway and will be aiming for early January distribution. And then just operationally, now that we've had the discussion about the twenty twenty budget or twenty twenty two budget, now it's my turn to take over and do the groundwork of implementing that for next year into our financial system and the fun of closing out twenty twenty one financially, submitting reports to all the many agencies that we are required to answer.
Guess we're starting tomorrow. Any questions for the assistant manager?
Yeah, but I would like to thank the assistant manager for offering work to the lower middle high school vice chairman.
They've honestly been nothing but a pleasure to be here, and it's been really great for everyone here as well.
Under item U, tax collector's report. I think we may have our elected tax collector on Zoom call with us.
Yes, I'm here. Thank you, Dr. Shergin. For the collections for October, there weren't very many, because most of the money has been collected. For face collections, we're at ninety seven percent, which totals five million five hundred thirty six thousand two hundred twenty six dollars. The actual amount, which includes discount and penalty, is at ninety five point thirty one percent, and that's five million four hundred thirty nine thousand six hundred forty seven dollars. The outstanding base amount to collect from now through December thirty first is one hundred ninety six thousand nine hundred ninety one dollars. Probably seventy five percent of that will be collected between now and the end of the year, but there are always between seventy five, I guess, and eighty thousand dollars that does get sent for collection in January. The final reminder letters were sent out last Friday. The office did receive many phone calls today for people wondering why their checks haven't been cashed, because they haven't been received. So we answered lots of questions today, but hopefully the rest of the payments will be coming in. Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you, Jane.
All right, thank you.
I would like formally request that the tax collectors report be accepted as submitted. Under item B, my liaison report, I continue to attend the school board meetings virtually as they are happening. And I believe the chief will one day say that there'll be a civil service meeting not too far away, maybe?
Sure will be.
Okay, we'll leave that for the chief to tell us at a later time. So that completes my liaison report. The last item on the agenda is review and consider appointment of Board three commissioner. So let me just preface a little bit about that. So as many of you know, we already had our interviews last week. The public was invited to that. We did have a number of the public attend that. And I want to thank everybody who did attend that and was able to visualize that. What we have before us tonight is that the board will actually be voting on a commissioner to fill out the remaining term for Commissioner Clay, resigned due to health reasons. That will happen tonight. And I just want to thank all three candidates who participated in the process, but unfortunately, we can only pick one. And I honestly sincerely thank you for, you know, participating in this process. So what we'll do is I'm gonna ask the board to comment first on what they, you know, their views and anything they want to say. Then we're gonna open up the public to say, speak their mind. Try to limit three minutes if you can, and then after that, the board will, somebody will make a motion, and we'll proceed with the votes. I guess I'll start. I did receive a lot of emails from residents and constituents, text messages, phone calls, instant messages, even a little bit of stalking me at work. But no, I appreciate the public's input. But I, but to be frank, some of the feedback I got was actually degrading to other candidates, so I didn't find that helpful. The comments that I did find were the ones that were positive to the person they were supporting. And I thought those were the most useful things to me, you know, upon consideration of who we're gonna pick as a commissioner replacement. So I'll leave up the other commissioners. If anyone made comments, then we're gonna open up the public to speak.
I'd like to thank all three candidates for stepping up to this. It's not easy, it's only a commissioner's role, we're going from public. So thank you for your time.
When I was told about this, I think my first reaction to the manager was, I really dislike this process. I do not want to be in this position. It's not something I enjoy. I wish this were in the hands of the voters. Unfortunately, because of the first-class township code, it's not in the hands of the voters. It's in the hands of us five sitting commissioners. But just so everybody knows, it's definitely not something I like, not something I really want to do. And I appreciate everybody's time for interviewing. I appreciate everybody coming out and hearing the interviews, hearing the process. Same thing with the messages and, you know, advocating for who they thought was the best person to fill Commissioner McQueen's position.
I also want to say that none of us wanted this to happen, of course. Commissioner McQueen and I, we now go to the social issues, but social issues barely come up in the township's. It's basically financial. So we're very sorry that Commissioner McQueen is, had to step down for health reasons and I'm sure it's been for all of us that we consider this a sad need and wish we didn't have.
Oh, I, this is a real difficult process. I think that agree with everyone who spoke. And as a long-sitting commissioner here, I knew two of the candidates very, very well. We're in a very small community. I had an opportunity to get to know one of the other candidates through the interview process. Like I said, we're in a small community. It feels like Lowermoreland, we're a family. And it's, it's a, it's a tough decision to figure out who's gonna sit up here with us and work with us every single day and make decisions that are in the best interest of our residents, our township, and our community. And as Commissioner Loehmert said, we are responsible for making this decision. But as long as I've sat on this board, I have not, I'm keeping this as positive as possible because it's been an extremely rough week for me personally. I have never experienced what I've experienced this week. I have been bombarded with text messages, text messages, emails, phone calls, private messages, everything. Borderline very inappropriate, as I said, I'm keeping this as positive as possible. And I won't make. as everyone knows me and knows who I am, I am going to make the best decision for the community that's in the best interest of the residents and the township and the community, regardless of any hardship. Because this position is not about that. It's about the people and the community. And I do believe that is why all of the years that I ran, no one has opposed me because they know I'm the person of the people and the community. And I'm going to close with that and again, keep this very positive and tell everyone that this is not, there will be a place for everyone. And we will try to, you know, have everyone included in some way, shape, or form in our community, whether it's an auxiliary board position or committee somehow, some way. We're a team. That's what it is. We're a community. We work together for the benefit. And I'm going to close with that.
Are you saying that the two people who don't get the position are going to be considered for other positions?
If there's openings in other, because sure Jill, that these resumes are, that will be kept on file. That's what Chris does. And if there's openings on other committees or, you know, boards, then they're considered for our, absolutely. They're considered for our boards and positions.
If they want a board.
Sure, because that's what happens. Absolutely. And it's wonderful that everybody wants to be a part of our community. And also, that's what. And I want to thank everyone that came to the interview process. Thank you. Thank you all, my commissioners. And I took everybody's comments and suggestions and I tried to get back to everybody as much as possible, but it was overwhelming. It was just overwhelming.
Okay, so if anybody has any public comments, please raise your hand. We'll be recognized. If you haven't already stated your name and address for the record in another part of the meeting, please do so and come to the podium.
Monique Coughlin, 3839, would you? I'm here tonight because I saw what was going on with social media. I was very disheartened. Just wanted to say thank you to all of you. I know it was a tough position. I saw that there was a little bit of harassment going on. I know some of you through PTA, through volunteering at the school, I know your heart is in this community. So I just wanted to say thank you. Here's words.
I guess the public would like to say something. Please come on.
Good evening. My name's Deana McCaffrey, 3267 Maple Road. I've been a Huntington Valley Lowermoreland resident for 28 years now. And I've had the privilege of knowing Laura Calphane since that first day. I sent this to you in an email, which I hope you found respectful because that was certainly my intent. Laura knocked on my door the very first day I moved in with a pie and a warm welcome. And that's just who she is. And it's, you know, every single day, you have a tough job right now. I'm not going to go into all the other things that I read to you in the email that she has been ingrained in our community. She is a very qualified small business owner who always, I'm sure all of you can attest to the fact that she sits here at most of the Board of Commissioners meetings. She's very informed and she informs the residents and that's a quality that I think is very admirable. You have a difficult job because you have three very qualified candidates, one of whom I know also, and one that I don't know, but I know that they are all very qualified. Your task is not easy and I hope that you don't take it lightly. I don't think that you will. But one thing that I think makes Laura stand out amongst the candidates is that she, and you mentioned, several of you mentioned the voters, the voters did speak for her. It was 12 votes that separated her and Mr. McQueen. And I think that that's something that should be considered and those voters should have their voices heard. So thank you for your time and thank you for all you do for Lowermoreland.
Hi, Judith Moss, 144 Baberry Road, Ward Three. I first met Laura when I was knocking doors for another candidate for the State House. And I actually met her husband and I told him that we were having an open house and they should come because we should all be about the politics in our town and in our District 152. I'm Laura and Reese King. And they asked questions and they engaged and they got to meet neighbors they'd never met before because we're on other ends of the hill. And the next time I met Laura, she was walking my street and running for office. I personally know Laura knocked on darn near every door and talked to nearly every person in Ward Three because my friend said to me, someone came to our door today to talk about running for office. It has never happened and I've lived here X number of years. I've lived in my house 38, 39 years now. And Laura's the only one that came to my door and knocked, even she knew me. This is who Laura is. I adopted a dog who's afraid of fireworks. There were fireworks or thunder. He ran under the deck and he wouldn't come out. So I called to ask if her husband could take some boards off the deck so we could get the dog out. And she said, no, but I'll bring my sleeping bag and sleep on your deck so he's not afraid. And I said, no, that's okay. 7:30 in the morning she came. The dog was still under the deck. I was convinced he was dead and he came out and he heard Laura. So a dog knows the quality of Laura. That's got to say something because you know what? Some people don't deserve dogs. Laura Calphane would do anything for anybody in this township in her capacity as commissioner. I have noticed in my volunteering throughout that when I show up to volunteer, like with Denise and Ruth to stuff candy bags, it's the women that are there doing the work. Men, I know you do things for this community, but the small things, the small things that really touch our children and our families are the mothering instincts that we have. She would be a fine mother and she'd be a fine commissioner for everybody in this town.
Hey, everybody. Hi, I'm Wendy Milliman at Hillcroft Road. I'd just like to say that I understand you're all in a tough position and like Deana McCaffrey said, Laura ran against Commissioner McQueen and lost by 12 votes. So when you say you have a hard decision to make, I understand it is a hard decision to make. But I think that Ward Three residents spoke when they said we won Laura and she was down by 12 votes. We've lived in the township for over 40 years and as everyone said, that's the first person that we've ever had knock on our door. I thank you for, I hope they consider what the residents have said that they wanted.
Any other public comments?
Good evening, everyone. Commissioners of Public. And my name is Howard Rovner, 1165 Woodwood Road. And I was here the other night when all three of the proposed commissioners spoke and they all spoke very well about themselves. But I think this is a process, but unfortunately, I don't think any of us, no matter what we're saying, is going to make any difference. I think commissioners have their minds made up. And part of it is because of what Commissioner McQueen wanted. And he may have expressed a desire to have one of the candidates appointed to his position. And unfortunately, that should not be the person that necessarily is picked. No. The person that should be picked should be the best person for the job, not who Commissioner McQueen may have wanted and suggested for the position. And they're all qualified people. One, I didn't know at all and I have never seen him in any meeting. One person I knew many years ago and did a lot of work for the community and may be deserving of the position. The other person's been around, Laura's been around for years attending meetings, ran for the position, lost by 12 votes, has been active, knows everything about the community. So who do we want to fill the position? Someone who's never attended a meeting, someone who was very involved years ago, he'd probably be the better selection of the two of them. Or someone who's really attended meetings, been in touch with the public, knocked on doors, knows the issues, lives in the community, works in the community. I mean, there's really only one person who deserves this position. But unfortunately, I don't think that that person is really getting the fair consideration that she deserves. There may be other reasons why Commissioner would move for somebody. Maybe personally, they've had some issues with one of these people. And for that reason, they may not want to move for them. That's not right either. So we should pick the best person for this position and I wish everyone would really think about it. You know, take a few more minutes. If you need to take a few more days even, think about it. Because there's only one person who's qualified to serve in this position. That's Laura Calphane. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Ruben Bergen, 470 Newell Drive. I've known Chris for quite a few years. I actually went to school with him. And he's always been a straight-up guy, stand-up guy. You know, everybody sees him as a very respectable young man. And he actually sits on another board with me that I'm on and he attends all the meetings. He participates, you know, very fully with the board and also volunteers quite a bit for that organization. He's always one of the guys who just, something needs to get done and he's like, I'll go, I'll take care of it. I'll get it done. So I don't know the other candidates, but I know Chris and I think he's a great guy and I think he would do a great job for our township. So, thanks.
Lori Kennedy and I live on Maple with Laura. And I was in the, I was in her with a Greater Philadelphia, Greater Philadelphia.
Are you talking about the Chamber of Commerce?
Chamber of Commerce. And I'm not on social media. I'm so worried. Sorry what you were through and thank you for everything you do. But she was on many committees with me and she was wonderful to work with. And she's on my street and she's a lovely woman and I'm supporting her. So I just wanted to say that. Thanks, guys.
Stanley Bach, if you can unmute your first up.
Hello, Stanley Bach, Stephen Road. Just a quick question for the interview process. Is there any kind of minutes or notes that are available to the public from the interview with the three candidates?
I don't believe so, but it was a live session and people were welcome to take their own notes at the time.
All right. Thank you very much.
Next is a new key. Do you unmute yourself?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I'm here to talk about Laura. We just moved to Ward Three last year. So we are actually three new voters in Ward Three that would have voted for Laura. So technically, to me, she only lost by nine votes. And she is an amazing person. I worked the polls with her last Tuesday and I've gotten to know her over the past two years when I ran for school board. She is one of the people that you could go to and count on and depend on for pretty much anything. She is not just a friend, but she's someone you can call and talk to. Something that she told me is that her, you know, her kids are moving. So she's going to have a lot of time to help people in the community, get to know more people in the community. I just heard the other guy say that Chris is on another board. While Laura is going to be pretty much free to help everyone she can in Ward Three. So I think she's definitely the best qualified. I do think that the voters of Ward Three did vote for her. And she did lose by single digits. And I think that the commissioners should definitely take that into account and not hold any personal feelings against or for candidates. I think that's really important, especially for the people who are in Ward Three. So I have full support for Laura and I hope you guys make the right decision for the right candidate. Thank you.
And lastly, Anna Everman, you are unmuted.
Thank you so much. So thank you so much for the commissioners for reading my email. If you've read it, I think I had a nice tone to it. I live in Ward Three, as I've said before, and I'd like to support Laura. Laura provides thought leadership. She provides expertise. She's been in this township for decades. I think when I think of someone that is going to do right by my children, I think of Laura. I don't really know the other two candidates at all. I'm not saying that they might not be qualified. But I sure do know that Laura is very qualified. I think that she deserves this chance. I think she came very close in the last election. You understand what Ward Three really wants and I know you have a very tough decision, but you know who really deserves to win. And I really hope that you make the right decision and Laura has my full support. Thank you for your time.
Any other public?
Good evening. My name is Carrie Givon. The property address is 3883 Buck Road. I'm here to speak on behalf of Laura. Some decisions are difficult and some decisions are no brainers. In this particular instance, I think we are looking at a very crystal clear decision. The voters have already spoken. They've already told you. And when Laura didn't win that election by a dozen votes, she continued to come to these meetings. She stayed active. And if we're being honest with ourselves, she has been more active than some folks on the panel. So I want to be really clear about this. The voters already spoke. This is really not about choosing between something that is really difficult and you have to look for like, what's the one thing that you might pick apart? There are so many aspects of Laura that clearly distinguish her from the others. She shows up. She's acting. She ran. She knocked doors. She participated in an election. So if we're doing what's in the best interest of the voters and of the residents, of what's in the best interest of the township, we have an answer. We don't have to struggle. We don't have to split hairs. And for the other candidates, be like Laura. Show up. Volunteer. Be a blessing to your community. Follow in her footsteps. Follow in her footsteps. Participate in an election. Go through the motions. Prove yourself. In a few years, run. See what happens. Laura already did that. She's been there, done that. So I'm not really sure how difficult that will be to determine. To me, I see it clearly. And I think if we're being honest with ourselves, the rest will too. Thank you.
I'll use this because I kind of can't talk with it. Again, Michelle Schwartz. I was here on Thursday for the interview and I heard what all three candidates had to say. If I were hiring one of these candidates for this job, if it was my decision, I was going to pay them a salary, I would want to pick the candidate who was forward thinking, who was ready to hit the ground running because there is going to be very little time for them to get on the bench, get acquainted, know what they're doing, be familiar with the problems in our township, be able to speak for their constituents. And of the three, there was only one clear option and that is Laura Calfayan. Not only did her constituents speak for themselves, telling us that they want her. Clay had already, Ms. McQueen served the two years. And I think it would be fair to split the difference of the four-year term to give the next two years to Laura. She won half, statistically speaking. It was a wash, half and half. I don't think there would be, even if there was a room of ten candidates, I think she would still stand out as the clear winner. I had the privilege of knocking on doors with her in 2019 as I also ran for office. We did the work. We did the last part. We showed up. We met the citizens. We know what they want. And they want Laura to be our voice. So please consider again Laura Calfayan to represent Ward Three on Board of Commissioners. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other public comments before, start coming up?
My name is Jim Burrows. I am one month short of living on Maple Road, sixty-three years. And in that time, same house I grew up in, still been. And in that time, there are, you know, you, you meet neighbors. And, you know, where some come and go. That neighborhood is somewhat of a transitional neighborhood for some. People come, start raising a family. They move on to bigger, better things. Not Laura. Chose that neighborhood. Stayed in that neighborhood. And Laura's her home in that neighborhood. I can remember seeing Laura walking with her newborn children with baby carriage past my house. Made an impression on me. Okay? Now, aside from all that, that's past history. But let me speak about passion and dedication. Something that hasn't been discussed here tonight. Her passion and her dedication just overwhelm you. Okay? Anyone who has ever spoken, jumped with her. Her passion, she puts her heart and soul into everything she does. And I can guarantee you, I, I don't have a decision. I don't. But I can guarantee you, if you let her join us, you won't regret it, not for one minute. She has the passion, the desire, the soul to do what's right for constituents. Always has and always will. I can only speak for Laura. I don't know the other candidates. I just know Laura. Decision is yours, but I can't say enough about her. Thank you.
Any other public comment before we take a vote? Congratulations to you three. I don't know any of you. I'm the mayor on my street. And I went through this process after Purdy passed away. I was the second guy to put the name in the hat. And I didn't win. Oh, Joe won. And I congratulate Joe. And he does a lot for hard work. So I can't say anything about the three people up here running. It's a tough thing to do, just sit in front and put your life on the line as far as commitment to do this. And I believe in this board because I've met every one of these people over the years to make the right decision. It's not politics. It's the right decision to move our community ahead. That's what I do in my state. A lot of people here know me, some don't. But I'm going to leave it up to these people to make the decision for the township. And that's all that matters to me. I want to make sure that living here is the right place to live. So whatever you guys decide as hard as it's going to be, good luck. Okay, I think we're at that first moment again. Thank you for all the participation. Thank you for the candidates who put their names forward and were interviewed. Do anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion for Chris Oner for Board of Commissioners.
I'll second that motion.
It has been motioned and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, for district official, we can do a roll count. Andrew Hopper.
Sure. So I will go in board order. So Commissioner Howson?
Nay.
Commissioner Blomheart?
Nay.
Commissioner Finale?
Yea.
Commissioner Serpens?
Yay.
Commissioner Hurst?
Yay.
It would be three in favor, two opposed for Mr. Hurst.
Great. Thank you.
Congratulations, Commissioner Select. It's our agenda items. Any public participation on non-agenda items, just aye. There are no non-agenda items. I'd like to entertain a motion for German.
Motion for German.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. And we have an executive session at the beginning. Executive session, the meeting, discuss business with our listeners. Thank you for participating.